Email.
I will. You know, there's a video you can watch.
That's the whole reason you put it under, you know, so I don't have to see any of that stuff.
I I started right. This is already feeling, I said, not a lot of pain, just a little on a scale from one to ten, so twelve, fourteen. And she asked, says, well, they can give you anything for treatment surgery, because, you know, for help. So we'll take care of that. An hour later, I wake back up and it's like. Right, it's six o'clock here. We'll start our May twenty second, twenty twenty three zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Um, first we'll do local. Uh Marvin will know it is absent today. Noel?
Correct.
David.
Here.
No, here. Um, I'm also present. All right, uh, next, if everybody has a chance to review the agenda, any changes, corrections, questions regarding the agenda? The um, only thing, and I'll just say this to everybody here, um, what we typically do is we'll have opportunities, um, as we consider each proposal, whoever the participant or applicant is, will have a chance to explain everything. We have any public comment on that particular proposal, we'll do that next. Um, and then the board will consider that individual proposal. So if you don't see public comment here in any of you, just wanted to, we will get to that as we go through through each one. Um, other than that, I think, uh, we'll move on then to approval minutes. If everybody's had a chance to review the March twentieth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, motion to approve the agenda minutes.
I'll support. The motion that has been supported, any corrections, additions, or comments regarding the motion? Always others in favor, any of you saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes pass. Next will be, um, one of the resolutions from past twenty two zero six, if everybody has a chance to review that. If there's no comments, I think. I think you were here for that.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Dave and I exchanged from our vote.
Right, um. There, so. Now you were here for the next one, the twenty three oh one. Plus we're reading, oh, it is twenty two oh six.
Yep.
We just. You didn't know it was twenty three.
I think everything is, it is accurate, yeah.
All right, um. We've already voted on those resolutions originally, if anybody, any other comments on them, otherwise I think we'll just accept those as presented. Okay. All right, the next, um, we'll move on to items for public hearing. Our first will be, um, the parcel located at four nine five zero Anderson Road. And the applicant, we have listed as Tom Becklin, uh, Mr. Becklin, are you here?
Yep.
All right, if you want to have a, go to the podium, please. We are recording, so if you can just state your name and address for the record, and then just let us know what you're trying to do, what you're asking for, et cetera, we'll go from there.
Okay, uh, Thomas Becklin. Uh, forty nine fifty Anderson Road. Uh, I have twenty five point eight nine acres. Uh, I want to shave off ten acres to basically build my sister a house kind of on the same area. I guess it was red flagged, uh, because of road furniture, uh, it's sixty six feet. Uh, I go back in the woods, three hundred twenty feet, and then it opens up into, uh, you know, twenty five point eight acres, which, uh, one house is on one side and the other house would be on the ten acres. Uh, so it makes, it's kind of a rectangle lot, uh, so it's a straight shot right off the driveway and the ten acres is on the south side and the fifteen point eight with the house, uh, is on the north side, so. Like I say, just trying to get family in there and, you know, do a favor for her, basically, build a house for her, so. And that's all I got, really, just.
With with the way, oh, if you want to just stay here, we may have some questions for you there, um. And if I'm looking at your survey correctly, you're going to shift over the the ten acre parcel. You're really only sharing this this beginning portion.
Yeah, uh, we just go straight through the driveway. We're only going to use the first, I think, hundred feet and just share that driveway, and then it just shifts over, creates a driveway for her on, because my driveway kind of does a curvy thing, so we're just going to curve it right off there and it's on that property then, so.
Any other questions?
So no reason to put another driveway in, is what I'm saying for that, you know?
Right.
There were some stakes on on each side of it, is that the property boundaries, is that what that is?
Yeah, one stake is in the neighbor's turnaround driveway and the other stake is on the outside, you know? It marks the sixty six feet there, yeah.
That's why it looked to be about that distance.
Then it actually runs up the neighbor's fence and. So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other? Right, if you want to have a seat, we may have some more questions here as we go, but, um.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody here, um, that would like to provide a public comment? Well, a public comment for this particular request at four nine five zero Anderson. Going once, I've watched too many Zoom meetings, I'm waiting for this phone hand to come up, but, all right, not seeing any then, we'll, uh, close public comment, um, regarding this one. So, all right, then, um, we can consider this a little bit amongst the board and, um, Stephen, I wondered if you wouldn't mind just taking us, taking just a couple of minutes and give us the thumbnail sketch, we've got three or four flag requests here and what, what the township, just in general, not specific to this one.
Yeah.
But where you see the issues are, what positives and negatives.
In general, flat lots, they are lots that don't have the required frontage on the road itself. They have a narrow strip of land leading back to a wider tract, which is, which meets the general requirements of the ordinance in regards to width, that narrow strip in the ordinance is called an access easement. Most ordinances specify it as a flag pole or some other term. And that can also be tricky because access easement is often referenced in allowing for private drives and access easements which cut through other, other properties as a means of service, and most can service up to two lots.
But the driveway can't, because the driveway is only one.
The driveway can service. An access easement for a flat lot can only service that flat lot. But an access easement through a dedicated easement on a deed can service up to two lots. That's considered a private drive. That would be considered a private drive. Yep.
Now, in a situation like the first request that's before us, it's a sixty six, if I recall correctly, wide parcel. We could split that into three two flag lots.
So the issue.
With two driveways, correct?
The ordinance specifies that no two access drives shall share a common boundary. But they would essentially be sharing a common boundary because we split it into two thirty three foot easements. It'd be two access easements on top of each other.
Even if they were deeded separately?
Correct, you can have two flag poles right next to each other.
Oh, two flags, okay, so now just two parcels with common driving.
No, specifically the pole of the flag.
So, if we had a subdivision, we could put our driveways right next to each other without an issue, but those aren't considered flag lots. And that is in the ordinance as well?
So in regards to the access easement going through somebody else's property, that is in four point two four, where it talks about private roads, there is a subsection that talks about private drives.
I guess I was thinking of, uh, you can't have two flag lots next to each other.
You can't have two flag poles next to each other. You can have two flag lots, as long as the poles are separated by another lot. But they can, here and here, he's fine.
Okay. Any other? We've got a few minutes, we've got three or four news before us, um, with similar, similar, so. All right, any thoughts? From the board regarding this, or any other questions, or start working through our actors, otherwise?
If I speak it, so, yeah.
Nick, anything? Further before we start? So, okay, all right, that the enforcement of the literal requirements of this ordinance would involve practical difficulties. Thoughts regarding that one from? I mean, in one sense, it's not a practical difficulty, because if you enforce the ordinance, it's not causing disability, it just means you can't split it and you can't add the property, you doesn't have to do some strange enforcement. On the other hand, that is perhaps a definition of a practical difficulty that, yeah, do that, do one thing about here. So I can kind of see that going either way.
The property use fits within the scope of the master plan, as far as I know.
Yes.
It's not like we're asking for a something that doesn't fit what we want to intention to go.
Right. And, I mean, it's theoretically possible, you could use them on the other side of the neighbors, just spread that apart, I mean, certainly, I mean, there's some apps, options there, but I think that we are forcing just because that's a possibility, that's a lot of hoops to force somebody when there is a wide driveway, already eliminated, et cetera, right there. Okay, are there any special conditions or circumstances that are peculiar to this particular land structure, buildings involved, which are not applicable to other lands in the same zoning district?
Yes.
That I saw, I mean, I I don't, looking at, I don't see any.
It does, it does limit his ability to subdivide. If we were to vote no, it doesn't end it, and there helicopter landings, various other ways you could get to that property, right, but the easements, I mean, there are other options out there. But this is unique, that doesn't count that. There's not an easy way to do that. I guess is what I'm saying.
Agreed.
So that's somewhat unique to that, although I don't think there's much difference between this and any other flag lot of the similar size.
Uh, yeah, I think the thing here is that there are sixty six feet of road furniture, you know, there's twenty feet, it's significantly different.
Yeah, there's a wide. Okay, that if we authorize this variance, would that be of substantial detriment to any other lands and uses? Or will it be contrary to the spirit and purpose of the ordinance? Let's skip one, but we can go back.
I would say skip, yeah.
There, we can vote, we can do spirit, we can do the spirit now.
I mentioned earlier, I think it fits into the spirit of what we're trying to do as a township. I think the master plan, I think it definitely falls in line with that, with limiting the number of exits off the driveway. I mean, off the road, creating another driveway does just another driveway, we can do it without it.
And arguably, you're going to have one better maintained driveway with two properties then. If we did, if you did wedge it into another parcel or something like that, so. And I don't I don't see any detriment.
No.
I mean, that's still a twenty six acre parcel. And when I went there, you can't see much from the house and the road, and we're not right at field, we're in a smooth backyard.
Yeah, it was nice and private. Very nice.
Okay, then let me, um, then go back to the one I skipped there, C, literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of property rights, eminently, by other people in the same district. Kind of covered that a little.
Simply for.
The serving of them with the ability to do anything else with that property, so. Okay, any other questions, or any questions for the applicants, or ready to?
I'm ready.
We'll start with that.
I make a motion of four Z B eight twenty three dash zero two for the variance to pass.
Support. All right, we have a motion, um, that has been supported to approve the variance that's been requested for dimensional variance in section four point two zero point one. And the only thing that I would add, and I think it was indicated, Noel, in your motion, that this is pursuant to the specifications, survey, et cetera, that that we have before us.
Okay. All that label stuff.
You don't get to switch. Switch this once we have.
I can't switch it once you get it, without being another six hundred F.
You're stuck, once, once you, once you put it in here, so. Okay, um, we have a motion that's been supported, um, with a little more detail regarding the specifications, um. I will vote yes on that. Nick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
All right. Right, and that motion then, here. Okay. Check the two statements here, though. Paperwork. Okay, next on the agenda then, um, is the vacant land on White Hall Road, uh, this is parcel number six one dash zero seven zero one nine three zero 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 two four dash zero zero. And this is Z B eight twenty three dash zero three, um, and the applicant I have listed as Margot Sabato, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, if if one or both of you want to come up and sa- same drill, if you want to come up to the podium here and introduce yourselves and your address, and then explain what you're requesting.
Easy. I'm Andrew Sabato, I'm the home being, I need to father. He's been through through medical procedures, he basically got oil in both eyes.
Completely blind at the moment, I apologize. Um, so basically, last year, I purchased the parcel at approximately forty eleven, uh, White Hall Road. Um, it's six point three acres. At that time, we started meeting with Steve and also some of the county to see what we could accomplish, being that my parents already live here in Muskegon. I have some younger siblings and also a son, so with the six point three, I'm looking to divide it into three lots. Um, lot A is one point six acres, lot B is approximately three point six acres, and lot C, closest to White Hall, is one point four acres. Um, between talking with Steve, changes in ordinance from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, um, and also what the county has requested, because it is on White Hall Road, county had asked us to um, file variances with you, because they did not want three separate uh, accesses to the property for the three lots. Um, so we're here with a variance request today due to the flag lots and with lot C with the frontage road.
If I can explain, from the legal standpoint, what we have done is to comply with your verbatim ordinance, everything that we did was intended to do that. The confusion came then between even myself, when your ordinance says easement specifically back in the flag lot, back in shared driveway or private drive thing, and easement can be, um, fully on a dedicated or deeded parcel, it can be part of an adjacent parcel. There's been a position here in town, and I'm not saying, I couldn't find it anywhere in your ordinances. All right, specifically, I asked for it to be applied to. So what we did specifically was we created the two flag lots side by side. This parcel's got a very strange shape to it. It was created some thirty years ago, not recently, and that time you didn't have many of the ordinances, you're doing good now.
Did you want to sit down? You can, read a set, if you're.
I'm good, I just can't, I I can see.
Well, I don't want your balance, yeah. Or anything else, so, um, okay, sorry about that.
Anyway, so what we did was, there's a five acre utility easement, a five foot utility easement adjacent to the north line of the parcel at front of White Hall. In addition to that, we put in a twenty foot wide driveway easement. If you look at the engineering prints and whatnot, that will be, have six foot, six inch thick gravel, put in its place in red, and the county is required that we put in a paved room on the front. The problem that we had is when they did the uh, looked at it for purpose, the, the robe commission looked at it for purposes of creating the entrance to the parcels, they restricted it to twenty five feet width and only one driveway. Um, they didn't want to go to, they asked us to come in and do a variance or ask for it to be, oh, overcome that. So basically, there's one drive, there's one dedicated easement, which is part of, if you look at the um, reasons for all of them, the reciprocal easement, now that puts the burden and the liability on all three parcels the way it's designed, so that all three parcels will be responsible to maintain it, and they'll have to fight among themselves, plus the liability goes with it, so it will not go to Dalton in any way, shape, or form. Um, that's the one thing that the private drive and the private roads problems that you've had before, the people try to deal with, and now you have, I'm a retired attorney, okay, I did this for a whole thing back in Indiana, not Michigan. So what we did was created it this way so that it would respond specifically to those issues. In addition, looking at it from what they requested, we put in, and which ordinance requested, we put in a forty five foot radius turnaround, or like a cul-de-sac, it's an ax handle at the end, so that all the emergency vehicles in the light could, um, turn around as well. So that deals with specifically the requests that, and have, and I talked with the fire department, and they had absolutely no problem. This is what we've basically done elsewhere. Now, the twenty foot easement for the private drive that would serve the two lots in the back would have been fine if we wouldn't have had the problem that, because we could have put a private driveway in separate for parcel C in the front on the other side. But when the town, when the county said it's in the White Hall, it's in the White Hall Road overlay district, and tried to hold it down, we had to come back to you because you're not in agreement, your ordinances aren't in agreement. Well, they're trying to restrict it for safety purposes, plus it gave us enough room to give us a perpendicular off of White Hall, um, so there wouldn't be problems there, and we basically are coming off at twenty five feet, but the twenty feet will continue all the way back until it hits the other portion of the drive, then it'll have forty, they'll have forty five foot radius turnaround area. Then the short distances to eighty feet approximately, the, to the front, so the hot garages of the houses, um. The engineering report definitely, we gave to, I don't, I think you should have gotten it with part of our packet. Um, if you look at that, it shows the plot plans for each of the lots, that's accurate. Um, Dalton has reviewed, given us approvals for zoning approvals for C, uh, lot parcel C, which is one of the front White Hall, and questioning what we're doing A, B, okay, right now, and the county's agreed, as far as a split is concerned, which is a split under Michigan state law, is what your split requirements are. So we made that, um, so they all fit. We have now got the septic permits on both C, and today we got the one on B, although there's a clerical error in it, but I call Patrick back, straighten that out. So, anyway, um, what we're asking is for, we put the two parcels together. We basically put the two flag lots side by side, put them underneath easement, it's a twenty foot wide easement. If you look at the legals that we presented with the package, it shows you that there's a, all three of the right of way easement, right of way, and drainage grants that go back to the pond are all the same on each of the three deeds, the only difference is the actual legal describes the actual parcel's dimensions, so. If you have any questions, I believe it or not, I tried, I believe I covered every base that you had in your ordinance. The only difference was that I wasn't aware of, and Steve basically told me that we generally don't consider two flag lots to each other, not going. That doesn't make sense, because your ordinance requires they both front on White Hall. I said, the only way I can do that with those two lots is do that, I mean, I could do it with pure easement, but I don't think it would be consistent with your, with your ordinance, so. There's that confusion, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, you can if you want, we can change it, but it's, this is the best way, because this puts a burden across all three parcels, no matter whether it's all family, as we intend it to be now, or thirty years from now, forty years from now, when it, maybe it isn't family, it would end up with private individuals, where they'd all have to insure, and the liabilities and the rest of it would all be, would cover all of parcels and the driveway. Any questions?
Thanks for doing your homework.
Yeah, really. Thank you.
I'm looking at, um, this portion, but I think you call it a pond.
Yes, it's pond.
Does it slow, where, I'm looking at this line here, this thicker line that can out.
The thicker line is the hundred foot line from the perimeter of the pond. So the, none of the houses are built within the hundred foot edge of the pond, and neither are any of the septic systems and whatnot, that's a requirement, then to be going back both under the health department, and you also have setback requirements that fit that. You like to have a larger parcel.
And the other question on the first on the White Hall Road parcel.
Yeah.
There's also another rectangular that considered a garage or outbuilding or?
That's proposed for, in, that's an outbuilding for her later on. But you're putting in a, be an outbuilding, like a barn situation, that she'll have on the thing, approximately twelve hundred square feet, well within the restrictions and guidelines of your what you call buildings, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no. These are for.
Yeah.
It's for an antillan building. What you see in the. What you see in the, the, those are elevations outside that. Okay. And basically with approximately thirty by forty, so it was twelve hundred square feet. But the elevation, it'll be two foot higher than that. Those are contour lines.
And no setback issues with this other parcel right here?
Yes. No, no setback.
That's about the only spot that a house on that parcel can go because it's wedged in.
It's tight there. It sounds, it looks like it's tight, but based on what the requirements are for the setback issues and whatnot, that was we made it that way. The other thing we could have done was shift the pond, but we were trying to make sure it's more interested. There's trees along that whole section, all right, between the parts of the house, the one acre parcel in the lot. It's in the front and that one. So that'll be like a green rain strip and whatnot that'll protect her and that she'll be looking back out at the pond and the stuff.
All right, thank you. Same as before, feel free to sit down and have other questions.
I put a survey on the, that's, this is a survey that could have been approved at part nine division. And you pointed that out to me this afternoon.
Yeah, we went back and the indirect survey.
The indirect survey was a survey that you could have changed.
We have that.
So that's one that I put on the, on the desk for you.
Do we have one or more than one? Let's choose this one.
It required, the engineering was already at one hundred fifty foot across, but the surveyor on his own volition measured it out, it's one forty-nine point eight. Unfortunately, Steve, I didn't, I missed it altogether because I was dealing with the engineering. I didn't think he painted it. And when he did, we had to go back and have him reset that pin. So now it's set over and it's exactly one fifty point zero two.
So something, the survey that the survey would be one dated four thirteen twenty-three, not the one dated three seventeen.
Okay, all right, before we get started, any public comment? We'll have a public comment regarding this vacant land proposal, ZB A twenty-three dot zero three.
But we do.
Oh, if you want to, same, same drill, everybody gets to do the same thing. They get to come up and introduce who they are and then we start.
Why don't we have the adjacent property?
This is Marson and I'm Greg. And then we own the adjacent property to the south. And
We would just make a review today about this meeting so we don't have any.
We've received no notice on any of this, so we are opposed to all variances.
And we may want to take our own survey.
We still haven't seen any.
We don't know how this link. And we were actually rehabilitating our home with our five point four acres for resale, which will probably be on the market next month. So this could impact that.
Yeah, we have traffic concerns and impact concerns on the property.
So you're, you're still on Whitehall Road, you're in this parcel?
We're the south. And then now we just found out that pins have been, so we haven't even had a chance to look at it.
We have our own survey, you know, to see it.
So we haven't received a board plan.
And it is very narrow property next to it. So any kind of building compared with, probably. Obviously, we don't know what it's planned, so.
So is your objection more due to notice at this point?
No, yes, no.
And traffic concerns also, the back part of the property is beautiful and we wouldn't want it wrecked if the houses are too close. We should don't know. So we're opposed to all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, where's your address? Sorry, what's the address? Three, three nine six seven. Are you living there? Yes, I'm working. It's been under, under. Are you living in the house or you proposing to live in the house or?
All right, all right, we're not, we're not having an open discussion right now. This is public comment.
Excuse me, I stand.
Yeah, we're living in the house.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Stephen, are we, do you have on record, everybody received mail?
I have record, I will go.
All right. Okay, do we have any other public comment regarding this? Yes, if you'd like to come up, same. If you'd state your name and address, please.
My name is Chuck Mize. I'm speaking for forty twenty-three Whitehall Road, the property directly to the north. Three generations of bosses have lived in that home. There's always been beautiful woods behind that home. This proposal is crazy because of the limited road frontage to put three houses when there's that small amount of road frontage. There's no way it would even be considered if there was three separate driveways. Let's look at Bolema. He built a nice row of houses on Bard Road, right around the corner. Single homes with a space in between them. He did not stick two rows deep of housing in there. He owns forty acres total. He pays taxes on that. It's set up the way I would sure like to see this set up, a single family home. Maybe a second home directly behind it. Now, if you look on that, there's a crazy property line on both sides of our property. It's almost at a forty-five degree angle. Now, the house on the other side has a nice ninety, so they won't have a house directly behind them. We're going to look out our kitchen window and see them looking out their living room window at us. That's my concern. If I had my choice between having a house directly behind me and having their pond, I would choose the pond. But I feel three houses is way too many houses for this small a parcel of land. How do, how many variances do we need to approve to get this to pass? All I'm asking is whatever the ordinances that are on the books, let's follow them. Let's not give any variances at all. If the rules on the books say they can build two houses legally, let them build two houses. If the rules on the books say that's best suited for a single home, then let's put only one home. Let's, please, let's follow the ordinances that are on the books. No variances.
Thank you. Anything further?
That's it. That's my opinion.
Okay, anybody else regarding the Whitehall?
Christina Martin, lived directly across the street from this property. I'm concerned about this humongous property. It's huge. I don't know how deep it's going to be. I don't know if that property's going to be fenced in. I know there's a lot of kids living across, right next to this that will love to go and explore it. Right now, they're little, but they're going to be out there exploring back in the woods. This is dangerous. I, I don't know what it's for. I don't know if it's going to raise trouble. I don't know what the purpose of a pond is other than attract mosquitoes. And the other thing I'm concerned about is the fact that is this going to have a problem with our, our water level? I mean, most of us are on well water out there. We're not on city water. And I love my well water. I don't want to change that. So I don't want this to cause problems with my, my well water either. And the other problem I'm having is the narrow air variance on the driveway. With two houses back there and one in the front, I think that should have the minimum required driveway width rather than getting variance on the driveway. No. Those are high problems.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else regarding this proposal? All right, seeing nobody else, then we'll close public comment regarding this particular request.
Stephen, any luck online?
The property that was, the owner we have on record is Maxim Property, Maxim Residential Properties.
Yeah.
Yes, and that was sent to the address we had on file at two, 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 West Grand River Avenue, Ochamis.
That, that's not the right address. That is the
And.
LLC.
And that is the address, we also sent tax bills. That's the address of record for the county?
That is from the county's GIS system.
Okay, so that's our, our owner of record and their particular address.
I believe so, yes.
It's a registered agent address is what it is.
The registered agent?
Yes.
Okay, so they receive your tax bills?
They usually inform me if anything I get in the base.
Okay.
Well, obviously, the concern is if the resident agent received notice, that's considered, considered notice. Doesn't address the concerns the property owners have, but certainly I think the notice is true.
How did you find out about the meeting tonight? That this was on the board?
My contractor was there, one of the general, somebody was on the property and he asked, hey, what's up? And found out about this and we had no idea.
I was doing my site visit.
Of course, he'll buy my property in a month if he wants to, you know. And he can expand as much as he likes.
Okay, all right. You know, as I, as we said, we're no longer doing public comment at this time. It's all right. I just don't want to have participation. We have specific questions, so we should be prepared. Absolutely. Prevent that.
Okay, any thoughts? Questions regarding this after we've heard presentations?
Stephen, I am not polished up my master plan enough to be able to speak to this one as far as where it's located at. Does this fit in the scope of my master plan for that space?
You know, so it is, it's currently zoned R one residential, where the minimum lot size is one acre. And the master plan, I believe, passes as low density residential, which is R one.
So as fact, each of these lots meets that one acre. Not necessarily usable depending on the pond, but they are one acre.
I would say it's I mean, yeah. Because again, there's two houses built right next door to me and I'm like, I had no say in it. And it is what it is. We have constant problems. Yeah.
And I think it's a
pain just because houses are being built next door to you. So to me, that's more legitimate.
And I just want to make sure everybody knows, we're not making decisions based on our objective opinion of things. You have to make decisions based on rules that are in place in the master plan, documents that go on. So please provide a little bit of grace. We're just trying to follow the rules as they're written, so. Even if in the presentation, they reported as one point six, three point six, and one point four, which is like six point six acres. And it says that it's six point two six acres, so I'm not even sure if you took any of the variance of any of those sizes, we'd still be at the one acre minimums. So we would, there's not anything as far as outside the scope of that. The one driveway access out there is that Whitehall Road corridor issue, which is also part of the review there.
That's not a Dalton, that's not a Dalton determination, that's a road commission.
Yeah.
Based on the, at the size of Whitehall Road, I assume M one twenty.
It's the Whitehall Road, Whitehall Road corridor, that's considered part of the road commission.
That is something that's important. The top check, okay, the overlay. The intent behind that is to limit the number of driveways on the Whitehall.
I assume M one twenty has something similar.
Yes.
In most of the year.
Access management overlay.
You talked about your letter here, four point two zero, that's similar to our first one. Okay. And that's the flag lot sharing A.
Yes.
Same driver. Then four point two four is a private drive sharing for two homes.
You know, reference also separate parcels, variances approved for A and B. Parcel C, as proposed, but regardless of what we do here, that doesn't change anything. And we're not undoing that previous decision.
No, the maximum number of administrative approvals have been given.
So the splits themselves, you could say are quasi-approved, but not the variable sets.
Okay.
Dimensionally.
Yes, when my individual went through, it was that as of right now, only two parcels can be, and are being created. But if the variances are approved, then the and the third lots will be created.
So I'll make sure I understood that notes.
The easement that goes on record, coming off of there, it would be servicing our, so one closest to Whitehall Road. It comes back to the cul-de-sac and then there's two. Anything that we would approve at this point, that becomes part of the record. So whether who owns it, still going to obtain the access to that, correct?
The easement, the easement goes with each of the properties.
Okay, that's, I'm just.
Yeah, why don't you give a, give a systematic, we're
Stephen, Eagle is the one that's responsible for all the pond and all of that, but what's?
Yes, Eagle only they only regulate ponds over five or more acres, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, the other this pond in this case would be subject to this only ordinance. And that was already administratively approved and is a natural requirement.
And that doesn't address fencing or anything else regarding.
There's a certain slope and grade that needs to be met.
If you're not dealing with the deep end of a pool, for example, it's going to be grading out on both sides.
Yes. You have to be able to walk out of the.
So if we walk to this, I mean, if we, if we limited this to two. Is there enough room to not create another flag? Because we still are dealing with this limited amount of frontage. I mean, we got one, but I don't know how you can get. I mean, we got one, but I don't know how you can get. We have two.
Yes, so the lot currently is one hundred and seventy-five feet wide, the minimum width. And the ordinance for an access easement for a flag lot is twenty feet. That would be. Those top fifteen feet into the required one hundred and fifty foot width. Of the proposed C up front.
But we're also doing the two driveways.
Yes. Essentially, if variances are denied, it could. A- adjust the boundary so that. Proposed parcel C in front extends all the way to the north. They could throw a. Driveway easement through parcel C to the two lots in the back. And then have parcel C of its own. You could play that out with the road commission and have parcel C be given its own driveway.
So what would stop that from happening? Right now, is that, that's not an us decision, that's a road commission decision?
Commission decision. An applicant indicated that the road commission. Is pushing them towards this option.
Right.
For a safer.
If we said no. It would go back to them.
It would. And there'd also be two driveways on Whitehall. When the access management overlay district is set up, encourage one driveway.
Well, and I guess that's, that's.
There's gonna be the trade-offs.
That's frankly the issue I'm. Twisting around in my head. If we denied us, there is another way it can be done. Without changing much of the dimensions. But then we're forcing. We're forcing a second driveway on Whitehall Road and I'm, and I'm questioning what we're accomplishing.
More expensive for why?
What are we accomplishing by doing that?
Yeah.
Cause my guess is the road commission will probably eventually. Given on a new house there, but then we've got the same density, cause the density is okay. And just two access points now. Rather than one.
So I'm hearing there's three homes being built in there. Regardless of what our decision is, we are just deciding if there's, well, potentially, if they choose to, or deciding if there's gonna be one driveway or two driveways.
That's kinda how I am interpreting it, yeah, because otherwise, I mean, you could say no, but then they're fighting this battle and putting a driveway. Away from here, but this is all still done because then, then we're at two for that. Yep.
There's a curve in each section beyond here, one this direction and one the other way. So there's, it's coming out of curves there that potentially having a second driveway. It's leads.
It's not that bad. I, I made turn around several times and just locating the property.
Yeah, I was a little on the gotcha. I had to learn a couple things too.
Tells you, you're at your destination.
I know, I know, it's clarified.
Where, where, where? I drive a small car.
Okay, anything other comments, etc.?
Did we have one more question yet?
Yep.
We're trying to approve several variances here. One is three houses back there rather than two that's supposedly allowed. And the other variance is a narrower driveway. I mean, isn't the required sixty feet on the driveway? And I know it's, this is narrower according to the plans. Also. The pond, does that have a problem with water?
Why would?
Water table and why would it, rather, like families?
Why would it affect?
I don't know. That's my question. I don't want any problems.
But that's not actually before us. That's on, on how that pond is regulated.
Who does that, who controls that?
That's through the township.
What township? Dalton? That's us. Right?
Well, that's us in the sense that we all live in Dalton Township, yes. We are the zoning board though. We don't, we don't deal with, with pond. Building issues. That's the building apart department.
Well, I don't want any problems with my water table and having water problems and have to help the city water do this huge pond back there. I don't want that.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we did get one more chance here. I don't know if anybody else wants to quickly speak. And make sure we get extending the opportunities we need. So, okay. All right. Then, um, anything else before the board? Or anything else we consider we're concerned? Hey, Ron? You feeling like emotion from my other, or do we need to go to the floor? We can, if we feel we haven't.
I beat him up pretty good or anything, but I didn't.
I feel we've hit a lot of them, but if there's something. I mean, I mean, really, the.
List them out.
What's that?
Could be listed out.
Sure. Okay. That the enforcement of the literal requirements of this ordinance would involve practical difficulties.
Yeah, if they do, practical difficulties, adding an additional driveway on to Whitehall Road, you can eliminate one.
Yeah, I, I mean, early at the end of the day, that's. That's, that's the question. So that special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structures of buildings, which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district. I think you're looking at two different things there. One. Obviously. The shape, it's not a typical shape, although I know Whitehall Road with the curves, there's always running, there's a lot of stuff there from time to time. And Whitehall Road. You know, the access issues on, on Whitehall Road are unique to this parcel that are not. Certainly not a discussion we had in our first, last time the Anderson Road where.
Right. And it's busy.
Okay. That the little interpretation of the provision of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of property rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district.
What requirements are met and, uh.
And certainly. This could be one property. This could be one house.
Right.
Um, as the two neighbor parcels are. But. It meets all the R one.
No.
Requirements for that, which is. Authorizing such variance will not be of substantial detriment to other lands and uses and not contrary the spirit and purpose of the ordinance. This is probably the one I struggle with the most because on one hand, we have Whitehall Road.
Right.
Access. On the other hand, we have. All neighbors, north, south, and.
Across the road.
Across the road, eastish, that are opposed to us. And that troubles me too. I just don't know. Legally, what we have to, to say can't go here unless it's the R one. District.
Exactly, and they're landowners.
It's R two or the five acre, or we jump up to five acres, well, then we're not here probably, or we are. This is still considered R one on Whitehall Road, which is interesting, but it is what.
It is.
What could they in future?
It does.
Point eight, two point eight.
It's good for, at least the spirit of, of the idea of having. Limited access.
With tier ones.
Right, right. Yeah, cause early that's all of our dimensional variances are all based on access issue. So, okay. Even did we help on that one, or is there anything we need to clear up there?
Good.
All right. All right, I will vote to approve the request as provided with variances one through five as contained in the request. Essentially, as I've said before, I think we're just, we're really arguing about where to put a driveway right now, and I think the driveway is well worth for safety being put together on one than it is. Branch off on the other. So that's why I would support this, even though I. Don't discount the neighbor's concern. I just don't feel there's much we can do with that because of the zoning and where it's located. And the solution they have is just to put a driveway in a different spot and open there, so. For safety's sake, I think we should discourage that. So, so that would be my, my motion.
Do we need to address the variances or just as?
He spoke it out.
Okay.
One through five.
All right, Nola, you second it then? Okay, any comments, questions regarding the motion as presented? Otherwise, I will vote yes. Nola?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ben Mac?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sir.
There, request approved.
I don't care. I don't care about everybody, man.
Pause a moment, everybody.
Flip. Appropriately.
Well, I'll turn this off like times today. Let's block, so we'll try to get.
Okay, next then, um, our request for public hearing will be the property located at two, seven, seven, one Lake Shore Road, Jeff and Rachel Baker. If one or both of you are here and wanna present your request to the board.
That's eight minutes. Right, two, seven, seven, one Lake Shore Road. Oh, we're looking to build a permanent shed. And the variance we filed was six feet from the property line. We're trying to get it to three feet.
The sheds that are there right now, what's their name?
They are probably four feet or not, within six, they're probably like that, so.
Okay.
Those sheds will be removed.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, cause it said that one would be removed as a thing. You have a chance to do a slight plan. Right, you should. I think Steve had a, I said, you were Steve. Think everybody should have a copy of.
Yes, well, there's.
The building.
Aside from the building, there's a. Cycle where it has property line in the road, and so it's gonna be approximately twelve feet from the road and. Thirty-six inches from the property line.
Where's that?
From the other side.
Let's see, so the four building elevations and that's on the left.
I see that.
Yep.
And I can see the, the west side, I'm guessing.
So, either west.
The west side, we're asking for thirty-six inches.
Yeah.
What is the distance from the?
Side?
Is it that you said is existing driveway there?
There, yes, there's the driveway there and then a shed going up to the driveway.
Okay, so you're going tight up to that driveway.
Yes, and then up to the, to the landscape section, like there's a, there's a wall, landscape there, every two.
Then how close would you be to your house?
It was, I was twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
We will not be attaching it to the house, so.
And the thirty-six inches, is that from the roof line or from the base of the shed?
It'll be from the overhang of the shed, yeah.
What are you looking at for an eve there?
A foot.
Okay, thank you.
And you're, um, satisfied if we were to approve those, your plans as presented, or you'll be locked into that?
Yes.
That would fly now. That's where the door is, that's where the windows are, that.
That will be.
Reflect, et cetera, so, as well as the dimension.
Right, yes.
Great. Any other questions for applicant?
All right, thank you.
Great, we'll open for a public comment then, if anybody wants to speak on two, seven, seven, one Lake Shore Road proposal. Being done, we'll close public comment on this particular proposal and then open up for questions, comments from the court.
I was just gonna let him, went there with those other two buildings.
Yeah.
Where, you know, we've got maybe two feet.
Right.
I don't know if you had a chance to go there, but there's actually a shed here and here.
Yeah.
Right, right there, yeah, yeah. Um, so we're not changing much dramatically there, and Steven, I assume we don't have any lot coverage issues?
No.
With, with that addition because of that. Oh, it would give a lot more space and clean up. Two sheds.
Yeah. We definitely add to their properties.
And the neighbor. Who has the, you know, the approach deck, so to speak.
Okay.
It did indicate that she was.
There you go.
She didn't have any issues with that. I feel a little better even though ordinance wise, it doesn't make much of a difference when the eve was the eve versus the wall and then the eve gets even. Even closer.
Yeah.
Going forward, so.
All right, what is the neighboring property as far as runoff to that space of the, uh, level of issue for those that went out?
It looked probably a foot and a half higher, so anything would still be running back down into his, his property. And I did look, you know, Nick, I drive by it all the time, and when I drive by it, it can look hard, yeah. There's, as, as you walk out to the road to the left, there's a similar building. And then as you drive down, there's another one, and there's about four, maybe in a row that are all very similar to that.
Right.
You know, closer to the road and everything else, so. The other thing that I noted was, um. There's that, there's a utility pool there, which maybe is movable if you, uh. Put in a request from consumers and can wait five years or whatever, but I think that's a structure there as well, so.
All right, anything further? Or we work through the factors?
All right, enforcement of the literal requirements of the ordinance would involve practical difficulties for that.
Pick up the driveway. Doesn't seem very practical to me.
Well, you could shrink. You could shrink the shed, the shed or the old building as well.
Stays within lot coverage. There's all the other things it does do. It does provide a better appearance and it meets the other neighbors.
And even if you. And even if we said you had to shrink it to comply, it's still similar. At size, it's still pretty similar to what the. Width line is what it is now from, from the driveway to the side of the road, so. All right, the special circumstances or conditions exist which are peculiar to the land structure of buildings provided, which are not applicable to other land structures and buildings in the same zoning district.
Well, there were other buildings in the same area, like it.
Hmm.
Similar.
I don't know who it's probably like destructive is. That's all of those properties have that issue, where they can't. They can't put anything to the front.
Right. Right.
Or to the other non-roadside, like side.
The other side has retained walls to retain that soil, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So with the driveway to be reasonable to get out, I think we have to take that into consideration, it's a unique.
Yeah.
Land layout there, that means.
All right, the literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of property rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district.
I think we covered that one, several, everybody else has got one.
Yep.
And they do as well, it's just a different, you know, they have two smaller structures, uh, all right, that the authorizing of such variance would not be of substantial detriment to other lands and uses, and will not be contrary to the spirit and purpose of this program, so.
We have a neighbor stating they're okay with it, and it fits, like Nick had said, the runoff is covered, there's a lot of things that are. It doesn't accrue anything.
Probably really only looking at a twenty percent. Gain maybe in physical structure.
Mm-hmm.
When you look at those other two.
Right.
Maybe a little more, but.
I think I get a little bit more. Let's all together, one billion.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that makes a huge difference.
Physical coverage, we're not adding.
No, not at all.
But a lot of, more useful.
Right.
Space.
More useful space.
Okay, anything further regarding that one?
What motion? So, big plan? Okay, make a motion to approve ZBA twenty-three dash four for parcel number sixty-one oh seven two hundred. Number zero 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 eight one dash zero zero. I will support.
All right, any comments or questions regarding the motion up there? All right, Nick?
Yes.
I will also vote yes.
David?
Yes.
And Nola?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. And that's Central Road. All right, okay, next on our agenda will be property located at four zero zero five Central Road, ZBA twenty-three dash zero five, this is a request from Greg Nash. Greg Nash, are you present? Okay.
Appreciate that, appreciate your time and consideration of this zoning variance, appreciate also that I have several neighbors who have come to support me in that. This parcel of land is a five acre parcel, it is, it is a. It has, it's more or less a backlot parcel, although it does have a hundred foot access strip. That you've probably got it. Yeah, okay, so. It's when you purchased this property, there was an existing pole building on the front of the property. Apparently, a previous owner had used that for storing business items and things, and, and so that, that was just part of the, the purchase was the, that pole building. We, we do not wish to build a house close to the pole building, we want to get back away from the, from the road, from the narrow strip of land back into this area. So our house would be basically in that area, and then we just don't want, don't want to build it in the narrow section of it, so. You know, our request is that we're, that we're allowed to. Bury from having that accessory building in front, so that we can continue with our home building plans and.
So you didn't anticipate putting a driveway?
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, the driveway, my daughter actually owns this, this, there's another, there's another strip of land this way. And so she, she owns that strip of land and the ten acres behind us, so, you know, the driveway will, will, will be here, but in the meantime, we'll, we've requested permission to access the, the, the building site. From her, her driveway, so, which she has granted, so.
There's a little driveway there now, it's right.
There is a little driveway that, that goes, you know, kind of in, in towards that bending.
Yeah.
So that, you know, the driveway is already determined.
Yeah.
I don't think there, has to actually be another driveway request made, although we did, we did, I'm sorry. We did make a request to the, to the, to the road commission to see if we needed to have any other driveway consideration, but I haven't heard from them yet, it's kind of a week or a week and a half. So I haven't heard from them. So we intend to, you know, our hope is to put a nice home back right around with the property. We'd like not to have to have difficulties with the whole of them. Although, it's good storage.
Exactly.
And how, you have an idea how old that building is, roughly?
I, I have no idea, I mean, it's still in good shape, pole buildings are pretty immune to age because of the nature of the construction, but, and, you know, it's fairly old, I. I don't have any idea when that building was constructed, it's been there. It's been there at least fifteen years since they, since they looked at that. Reality is that, as far, you know, our, our home will be way back off the road, five hundred, four fifty, four fifty feet, you won't even see our home from, from the road, probably. Because it's tucked back away from you. Away from that, so.
Any other questions right now? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. We'll open to public comment, if there's anybody who'd like to comment on the request for four zero zero five Central Road.
I told Greg, I couldn't, come up here and put a stop to this, but I'm just kidding. I live, I'm, I'm Michael Bennett, thirty-nine, twenty-eight, Central, just across the street. It's interesting that I got a notice on this, because I feel like I'm a little bit down from it, but I guess within a perimeter, so we don't have any problems with this, I mean, it seems like a. Uh, it, it's interesting to me that the, the building was even allowed to be built there with the big lot back behind it, but anyway, it's, it's there, it's been there forever, so, yeah, I don't have any problems with this at all.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, then we'll close, um, public comment for this request, and then, uh, any questions or comments from the board?
There was some power equipment in front of there, there was like a, is that, is that on the property for you, or is that?
I'm not aware of any power equipment on the property. Were you referring to the motor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that, it's actually on her strip of land.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, that was part of.
No, that's, that's her access strip.
But it was part of ours at one time, at one day.
Just one day.
One day.
I'm trying to figure out where we were heading, no, okay.
There's an existing driveway that goes way back.
That's what I was, that's her.
Which is mine, the daughter.
Yeah.
But her son, he has the loader, and he didn't like it by the road, so.
I felt pretty good when I bought my kid a tow truck, so. The front motor, that's pretty good.
All right, Stephen, just so I can state for the record, I know you mentioned that to us in your report, but this is a lawful, non-conforming pole building, correct?
I believe it's lawful, and at this point, and it's too late to do anything about it, so.
The thinking being it was in place well before the ordinance.
Yes.
Came into place for saying no accessory buildings in the front.
So this is one of those situations, how do you take that lot and do something moving forward with already the things from the past, and it sounds like a pretty solid plan for. How you would do, that's where I'd build a house, it makes sense, I wouldn't put it in front of that, you'd be on the road literally, so it's only seventy feet from the road.
You'd have it right in front of your house.
You'd own a skinny house.
It would.
So, so if we were to grant this, we're really making this then into a conforming.
Yes.
Even if it's lawful, it's still lawful either way, but we're.
You're also allowing us to be built behind it.
All right, anything?
No, it's gonna be so far back behind it, it's, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm assuming like dropping it as the pole bar. All right, that the enforcement of the literal requirements of this ordinance would involve practical difficulties.
Yes, they would, you wouldn't be able to fit a house, building on that lot, you couldn't build anywhere on it, though.
Just counting a twenty foot wide tiny house, or something like that.
Never even a long tiny house, yeah.
That special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structures or buildings involved, which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district.
The tidiness of that pole bar.
I mean, this is the definition of grandfathered in, right, where you had it before the ordinance, and you get to keep it, and now we got to work around it. Going from there. Little interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of property rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district.
You could not build a house on it.
You're discounting the, the twenty foot wide shotgun house, although we don't see a lot of those, so I would say that's still. That's still another, something most of us would select or have in the culture. Certainly not being able to use that property at all for residence would be. Detriment, I believe. That their authorization of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to other lands and uses, and will not be contrary to the spirit and purposes of this. And anything for. As much easement acts, easement pocket we had today. Forcing one to take place there, I mean, arguably, you might be able to get one from another location. But that doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Anyway. Having up there, so, we still can't change the dimensions of what the front is, or back is, that's us, so. All right.
I will make a motion to support. The ZBA twenty-three dash oh five as stated. Support?
All right, any questions, comments, I'll just note, we don't have any new or specifications here, because we're just authorizing a house.
Yeah.
To be located at that, well, then, building code will dictate some acts, et cetera, so. Okay, any other questions regarding that? All right, I will vote yes.
Nick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
All right.
Run while you can.
All right, um, we will then shift to our last proposal for the night, which is two six seven seven Middle Lake Road, request by Tom Nyman, who is the applicant. I know the drill by now, if you just want to introduce yourself, location, and.
Six seventy-seven Middle Lake Road, I have recently built a house on almost twenty-six acres, I would like to split four point nine, eight, nine acres off to help my daughter build the house. At the same problem that the other four people had. Ten dollars, don't you?
That it was, it was flag day.
Yeah.
So to speak, so. The, um. You have everything surveyed. Yeah, and I'm just looking, this, this is the proposed for the new. Correct, are you proposing the house already? Because this is where you're already are, we're here.
That's just me.
Well, that, that is yours. And then they would tail off.
Yeah.
Right in here. Yeah, lost that, and I see it. Yeah, it was too close to me, yeah, I gotta put the readers back on, so I can. Oh, I see, so you have to stretch that, is that where you have a little clearing?
Yeah.
Already started?
Yeah.
Right in there, okay. All right, um. The one question on the note we had here, Stephen, that maybe we can address. Is the, the depth to width ratio?
Yes.
Is that something we need to specifically address, or we just have to state this may need to get shifted?
Yeah, you just note that it may need to be shifted, so would be a good idea to. Hold them to the specific surveys that they're.
Okay. Are you worried you might have a up to width issue?
No, it wasn't where that.
But you may have to clear it out.
Yeah, we could change any width or.
Just a tweak, yeah.
That important, yeah.
Okay, any questions for applicants? All right, thank you. All right, uh, any, we'll open then public comment for this proposal, anybody which to make a comment on this particular request. All right, seeing none, then we'll close public comment, and then, uh, any discussion amongst the board? Open record, but, you know. I don't see anything that really distinguishes this from. The group's up and down, and there's a room for the house there. Once again, it's a. Really, it's a large driveway that's, requires, but. You know, as I eyeballed it, that was more than, that was more than twenty-two. And don't invite it or travel or whatever, house. All right, any other comments, or should we go through the factors? Okay, um, that the enforcement of the literal requirements of this ordinance would involve practical difficulties. Yeah, you know, come back to, we could probably force two driveways right next to each other.
Right.
And what's that going to, that which? Clearly, it would involve some difficulty building and some doing that, so. But, yeah, um, special circumstances or conditions that are unique to this land structure or building, which are not applicable to other lands, structures or buildings in the same zoning district.
It's flag lot.
Flag lot, yeah. Just make it unique. That if we literally interpreted the provision of this ordinance, would we deprive the applicant of property rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district?
And have his awesome daughter live next door.
With that somewhere. But, you know, I go back to, we've, we've approved flag lots. Flag lots still exist, stuff we haven't approved, still exists, so I think, you know, that's what we've said about the other ones, to say, oh, you can't hear one, there's nothing distinguishing it from the other one. I mean, that's why.
Lies with everything else.
I can't say it, makes. Right, that the authorization of such variance would not be of substantial detriment to other lands and uses, and not be contrary to the spirit and purposes of the. We could maybe force another driveway, but as I indicated, the spirit of ordinance is to limit driveways.
Lives next door, so, who gets Lisa's daughter?
Well, and I think there's another, remember, there's another house farther back, I mean, there are some flag.
Right.
There's almost a new. I wonder, yeah, houses back there. Okay. All right, anything further? Or if we have anybody who'd like to. Make motion regarding this one.
Thank you.
All right, all right, because I did the very first one, I flung it up. And so I will make the motion, ZBA twenty-three dash zero six and two six seven seven Middle Lake Road, make a motion to approve the variance.
Support? All right. Um, and we're just noting, my only comment, noting that.
Afforded.
We're not accepting the survey. As generally presented, but not specifically, in case there needs to be some dimensional changes regarding that, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Stephen, for, for that, so.
So you can work with Steve on that?
Okay, um, I will vote yes. Nick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Nola?
Yes.
All right, that motion also passes, thank you. Okay, um, I have misplaced the rest of my agenda at some point, but I'm pretty sure we'd have normal public comment, if anybody would like to speak on any other issues not specifically before the board. Well, that's really where everybody's rushing up, so, um, we have communications, Stephen, regarding the ZBA certificate, certification?
Yes. And if you'd like to take, like, take part, Township will pay for it.
That's all that matters, it's like.
Yes.
That's not a specific time, that's just do that here.
Right. Okay.
Any questions, comments regarding that? All right, otherwise it'll be old or new business. All right, we did answer public comment, but certainly, if I just want to say anything else, otherwise.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So does so move, all right, thank you all.
Thank you.
I would have taken the over. I was, I was thinking.